It's nine o'clock. We'll call today's meeting to order. City Manager?
Good morning, Council and staff and guests. Second day of retreat. Let me give you a few logistics. You have all kinds of snacks over here and drinks, so please make yourself do whatever you want throughout the day. Restaurants are right around the corner. There's not a scheduled break, so if you need to go to a restaurant, feel free, or if the mayor wants to give you a break, you might get in a ledge. We will be breaking at 11:30. I told you in your backup that you were going to be on your own driving, but Eric's a lot nicer than I am, and he found a van. And so for those of you that would like to ride over in the van, you can do so. Just please know that the meeting will be adjourned here at 11:30. Travel in the van is not part of the meeting, so please don't discuss any business. And then we'll arrive at J2, and we have several Old Town presentations for you while we're at J2. At 2:00, we come back here, we meet and meet. So you have to look at me today and pretend I'm Karen Walls, because Karen would normally be doing this. She's been our facilitator for retreat for a number of years, but she's off on some phenomenal fantastic vacation, so she was not able to be with us today. Last year, at the 2018 retreat, you gave us direction that we should go back and have additional engagement related to our 2025 program. So the conversation was that we made a lot of progress, but what we want to do is make sure, go back to the public and just check with the public and make sure we're still on target and see if there are additional items that need to be added. So staff, we've been working with Karen. Karen will be again leading that project for us. So we had a conversation with her, and as we talked about it, we started thinking, well, here it is, you know, we're just close to five years out for 2025. What we don't want to do is what we did for the 2010 plan. So we created the 2010 plan. We made a lot of progress with the 2010 plan, but we didn't look to the future according to the plan. So we are calling the next step the 2040, but that's a council decision. I don't know if 2040 is what you guys want or 2045. So we'll pitch your direction for that today, but we think we should always be looking to the future. I thought Chris Bright made a lot of interesting comments in our session yesterday about the future. So you see that private sector is extremely engaged in looking to the future and how that might impact development. So the city staff also has to be looking to the future and the city council. So much of what he talked about with the time of the city that goes and those type of things certainly impact our rules and regulations and what we need to be considering for public policy. So we do have a futurist here today, Karen McCorbin. She's sitting right over here. So she's going to be sharing some thoughts that she has about what's the future will bring. I don't know if anyone had any chance to look at the articles that Chris Bright handed out yesterday, but those are really interesting, I think, about the timing. Well, how quickly is that going to happen? So with that said, I'm going to go through kind of the process that we're going to follow related to the update. So as usual, Karen has a very nice lead process. So we'll start with design. We'll move to engaging the Louisville community, building agreement, drafting any updates to 2025 and your next steps in progression of your 2040. Working on that draft with city council, and that should be coming back in a draft recommendation form to you at the 2020 retreat. And then finally, adoption of 2040. So one thing that came up again as we conversed about next steps was a couple of areas that we think need special focus. So Carolyn, your library director, came to me, and she said, our strategic plan is really not a deal. So we need an update for that, and we want to look at some kind of public engaging, obviously. And so it seemed like that went very nicely with what we're trying to achieve with our 2025 update. So we will have some special emphasis on the library and what that future should be. Later tomorrow, you're going to have a presentation from Libby White on sustainability. And I don't want to go over everything she's going to tell you tomorrow, but you'll remember at the last year retreat, we talked about modeling the sustainability plan for the city after the STAR program. Well, there's been some issues related to STAR, and so we're going to talk to you potentially about having a separate sustainability plan that will inform the 2020 plan in so many ways. So we think it's also a good time, as we go out to the public, to talk about sustainability. We're going to talk tomorrow about sustainability, how broad that definition should be. It's a pretty narrow definition in your 2025 plan for today. If you look at the STAR program, it's a very broad definition of sustainability. So we'll be considering that tomorrow. But just know, you'll see some mention of a sustainability consultant and the library board as we move through these slides. So I'm just going to flip through these pretty quickly. This just gives you some timeframes that Karen has recommended and we have reviewed. So we'll start in 3/19, March of 19. This will probably go on at least through September, where we're actually designing the process. It's very important that we step back, we analyze really what's going on in the world and how that impacts how we should be moving forward. We'll also be looking at the accomplishments we have had today. I think James has done a great job with giving annual reports to the community, but we want to really step back again and analyze where we are at this point in time. And certainly then, the next step would be engagement. We want to work with the 2025 committee. These people have been involved with us since 2013. So we want to work with the 2025 and their leadership to move forward and to engage the community in a variety of ways. You remember, we did all kinds of different activities as we created the 2025 plan. And I think it's very important that we do that again. Certainly, not everyone's going to come to the meeting. Certainly, not everyone's going to look at the web and fill out a survey. So I think we have to look at a variety of different ways to engage the public. We were very successful in doing that in 2025, and I'm sure we'll be able to do that again. A checkpoint, this would be where, if you remember when we created the big moves, we went out to the community after we had that engagement, and we said, hey, this is what we're hearing. Is this in tune with what you see, or are there some differences? So we spent some time creating hopefully some great events that bring people out, using our own special events, Up Western Days, Cala Palooza, to gather an evaluation of the information that we had developed by that time. And then we'll start, we'll look at that update to 2025, and then we'll start looking at 2040. What's going to inform 2040? How are we going to move forward as we go beyond our 100th birthday in 2025? And we should be finishing that up in April. We'll be reviewing the draft with certainly co-creators in our community, our 2025 committee. And then finally, we should finish that in 6/20. And then we'd be looking for adoption sometime in August of 2020. So again, it's going to be a very intense type process. We're going to work hard to engage the public, and hopefully we will create a new plan as we move forward to complete 2025, and certainly new ideas and new concepts to take into account what's going on in our community. As Chris Bright said yesterday, every day we get a new goal. And I'm not for sure plans can be as static as they could have been at one time. We have to be daily looking at that future and how that informs our plans. So, Council, any questions, concerns about the process? Gina? Gina's going to talk a little bit about the big moves. And we talked some about this last year, and we said we've got big moves, and then we have city council priorities. And city council priorities were adopted many, many years ago. And the mayor's the only one that's on the council today that was involved in the development of those principles, those priorities. And to tell you the truth, in some ways, they're a little bit dated. Not that the mayor's dated, he's never been there. But we think that when you look at the priorities, that really so many of those priorities fit very well under the big moves. And so instead of having to look towards both of those as guiding principles for what we do, we'd like to bring them together. And I've taken the whole presentation, so I'll shut it down now.
So what I'm showing you on the screen now is the current list of city priorities that we all know and love. We've had those for numerous years. And I don't want to say that they're really a one-size-fits-all, but they're pretty broad. And most of these have priorities that are similar to these. We've tweaked them over the years, but basically they encompass most of our city operations. We also have the nine big moves. As you know, we adopted those in July of 2014. And these are all more specific to Louisville, to the vision that we want for 2025. And so what we always try to do is use both. So you'll notice when we do our budget retreat, our budget workshop, we're putting things in terms of how they relate to big moves as well as our city council priorities. Out on the performance dashboard, you'll notice that we put those in those two buckets again. We do that in numerous publications. Now, we do that because we think it's great to be able to show that we are working those plans, we're using those priorities in our day-to-day decision-making as well as our long-term planning. But it can have some drawbacks as well. All of the duplication of doing it both ways actually causes more work for staff. It causes, it can be confusing for our public and our staff about which directions are we really going in. The staff in particular, when they go to enter their budget requests and they're having to pick certain big moves or priorities, a lot of times they overlap, or they can mean the same thing. They're picking them multiple times, and it's kind of a lot of extra work there. The big moves also don't directly impact our internal services departments, such as our HR, legal, finance. Those are harder to really directly tie into a big move. And then lastly, the terminology is just outdated in some of those. You'll notice throughout the big moves, as well as the council priorities, we have nothing that talks about connectivity or nothing that talks about values, specific values, things like that. And so we'd like to build in some updated terminology. So what we are recommending today is two things. One of them, that we merge our council priorities as they currently look now under our big moves, and I'll show you some examples of that. And secondly, that we add some strategic moves to our big moves that we would use internally to help us accomplish the big moves. So this is kind of an example of how our big moves currently look and how our council priorities could be tied into those big moves. For example, extending the green, our Green Center piece. The council priorities dealing with cultural and recreational activities can link very nicely under those. Safety and security can link to thriving neighborhoods. Enhancing the community image goes to communication and marketing. So you can see how some of those linkages are already pretty clear. And I'm confident that as we start to work through that, we'll find more of those linkages that make sense for us with our action steps as we use those throughout the year. And then the three big moves that we want to add is one, we want to have a big move that says we're a values-driven organization. As you know, we've tried to implement our values throughout the organization in, I guess, the last couple of years. We do that in the budget through our annual strategic, our SWOT analysis. We also have done it through our performance evaluation system. And so this would be yet another way to engrain our values into our organization every day. It's also a place where we can put in our prior council priorities of maintaining a stable, high-performance workforce, empowering employees, and engaging our residents. The second strategic move involves being a smart city. And we're going to talk a little bit more about what that means for us here in Louisville. Carolyn Corbin will talk a little bit about that next. But for us, it also means continual process improvement, controlling cost of service delivery, being a nimble city, kind of just removing some of those bureaucratic barriers. That means economically advanced innovation, long-term vision, all the things that we're currently doing, kind of the new terminology that you see as we do all of our presentations to you. And then lastly, we have the strategic move of being a connected city. And here, we're talking about not just cars by grill, car sharing. We're also talking about technology, global thinking, kind of where we are in the marketplace globally. And so those are kind of the three strategic moves we would feel that would be best added to the city right now to help us. And how are we? Council, do you have any questions, discussions?
Are we merging these items, like from the city council priorities to?
Yes.
Okay, so it's like a big moves 2.0?
So yeah, so we'd be merging the priorities with the big moves, and that will be largely done as we work through this public engagement process and then you're adding action steps. And then number two, we think it's important that we add what we are calling strategic moves. And those are really those actions that we take internally and what we focus on internally to move the organization towards the future and what that brings. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it also takes away some of that one-size-fits-all approach to the council priorities. You know, as we heard yesterday, average is over. You know, that to me was more bureaucratic almost, in that it wasn't specific to Louisville. And being able to make it be more about our big moves, where we're looking as a city right now to being in Louisville 2025, really working towards that. And as we update those big moves or change them for 2040, then we change it again. And being able to continue to change and grow as the city needs us to be that flexible.
So who's determining?
I agree that you've got two columns, two benchmarks. You need to get them into one. Who's determining how column B fits into column A?
Well, right now, we have it just like laid out for you in the way that we see that it connects. As we work through this next year, probably during budget presentation is when you would see the final kind of consolidation. And we can definitely come back to you prior to that if you'd like to see how that's laid out.
And then it would be through the public engagement. See how that comes together, and then certainly go back to the council group after this process.
So my concern, question, maybe concern's too big a word. Big moves is community-generated, drives this organization, drives council. Those council priorities were generated by a council. And so the question then becomes, you know, do we want to be completely generated by a public discourse or do we want to have some council input on how that all maps out?
I think you always want to vote. I think it's critically important that we want to the public and we're asking the public those questions. But then, but then it comes back together as the elected officials look at that data and decide what's correct for the organization. I think it has to be voted.
And that's where I want to make sure that we, we're not just assuming that all into a public discourse, because there's a lot of things that we do that are not sexy that will never make it on the top 10 list of residents.
And that's why we're adding in a lot of these, like the stable, high-performance workforce and maintaining financial security, things like that, that aren't sexy to the public in terms of big moves and how we're getting there. But we can definitely drive in some of our internal discussion that way.
Okay. As long as the process is going to account for that, yay.
That's our goal, absolutely. So this is a few of the ways that we would see those council priorities being moved into the strategic moves, where we're talking about cost of service delivery, financial stability, being a smart city would encompass that. Transportation would be a connected city. And so it's taking some of those kind of more internal city priorities and putting them into the strategic move moves.
That's interesting that that one's changed from IT to mobility. Because when I think connected, when I think connected city, I think connectivity IT from my background, right?
And it's vote.
But it is. I mean, there's a lot of other things, too. It could be, it could be your, yeah, your trails. It could be your ethnic diversity and getting those communities connected together so that they're, I mean, there's a lot under that word.
If you look at the structure of the retreat, you see a story to make that move, to bring those priorities together with the big moves. We have Kevin Dever talking about nuisance abatement. And where's he talking about that? It's under the concept of thriving neighborhoods. You cannot have thriving neighborhoods if there's a fear and they don't feel safe. So that's where it all starts coming together. And there may be a big move that has to be added. We don't know. But the strategic moves really are from more of a staff perspective. Not that that can't be informed certainly by the public also, but it's all those, some of those things that aren't so sexy that we know are critically important, like process improvement.
So really, we were looking at the direction today for us to continue kind of down that path if you're in agreement with both combining them and adding the strategic moves.
I am, as long as we get to see it before it becomes reality, yeah.
You'll see it through the long process.
Sure.
Anybody else?
I like it.
Council, in your backup, we put an update to 2025 goals. And I did not plan to walk through and read those to you today. We can certainly respond to questions. Some of these issues will be discussed as we move through staff presentations. For example, if you look at Green Center piece and the partnership that we have with UNT, I think there are a lot of questions. And Stacy's going to talk about that some more this afternoon. So unless you have specific questions on the big move goals, I'm not going to spend much time on that. And just know, those are the goals. We have a number of action steps under each one of these, and that will be something as we look at that design, the 2025 update, or what we're going to do. So any questions?
I believe so.
So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Carolyn, and she's going to talk about the future, what we need to be cognizant of.
Do I have to?
That one. Which one do you like? Do you want me to?
Oh, probably I do it because I go at a different speed. Actually, no. Sporadic. Let me gather myself up, and I'll get down there. Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here with you today. Let me put some of my things down. Now, Mr. Mayo, members of the city council, city manager, mayor, all of the people here from the city, city of Louisville, I just really appreciate the opportunity to kind of be a part of you. We worked with the directors. It was about three weeks ago, wasn't it? And a lot of what we're going to be talking about was what they have developed along with what we put into the context of what's going to be happening, really right up until 2045 or 2050. And we have a pretty interesting future ahead. So let me make sure I have. Yes, I have this. Okay. One of the things I do want to mention, do they have copies in their notebook of these? Okay, so you have what I have up here. Fantastic. One of the things that I do want to mention is that what we're going to be talking about here today are observations. Of course, the future is very difficult in many ways to project because it's, things are changing so rapidly, and then you can have all kinds of surprises that you never even thought of, and it can change the direction of the future. So we're going to make the observations the best we know from our research. And then any decisions, any in-depth study that you might want to do, then that certainly would be your decision. So we do want to let you know, we observe, we proclaim, we do the best we can, and then, of course, the final decisions are up to you. So we'll go through this. Now, do you want to ask, let them ask questions during, at the end? Have a discussion? It's a, okay.
It's better if I didn't ask questions.
Okay, ask questions alone. Is that good with y'all? Okay.
I might forget them.
Oh, well, I might forget the answer. So that's great. So, and you want this to be done in about an hour, right? Okay.
We have till 11:30 when we break.
Oh, okay, and we have now 9:30. So, all right. So we will go at the speed of whatever you wish to go. We have plenty of material, and, you know, 20, 40 minutes, quite a while, but yeah, it isn't. So we'll work our way through, and we'll get out there. Please just relax, have a good time, enjoy yourselves. Now, the first thing we want to talk about is the state of the Texas Triangle is great. In fact, I was just reading yesterday the latest economic report coming out. Now they're gathering up all the data for 2018. And we're so fortunate to be where we are. We are in the Texas Triangle, and we are about 42% of the Texas Triangle, the 13 counties of North Texas. The Texas Triangle is huge. It's about 60,000 square miles. You can see where we had it measured off there. It goes up Highway 35 along the left side. It goes along I-10 on the bottom. Most people would tell you it goes up I-45 on the east or on the right side. I've moved it up for a little bit, and I believe we ought to bring it up from Beaumont. And it could go all the way to Tulsa because we don't have the top of the triangle in there because that takes us into Oklahoma. And we're only worried about Texas today. Well, we're not worried, but we're talking about it today. But, so I put Highway 69 in there just in general. So it's about 60,000 square miles, 66 or so counties. We don't have to exactly be exact. It has a population of around 18 to 20 million. And by 2030, we'll have about 24 million, according to demographic studies at the time. And in our area, North Texas, is about 13 counties, according to the North Texas Commission. And in those 13 counties is a boom time happening today. So we are, there are 11 mega-regions, and that's what this Texas Triangle is. It's one of the major, about the fourth-largest mega-region and highly productive mega-region in the United States. And then you take our North Texas region, it's about, of course, that's much smaller than the Texas Triangle, but it's about the fourth-largest and most productive in the nation. So the state of our economy is strong. Now, we'll talk about national debt in a minute. But if we keep our interests paid and nothing happens, then the state of our economy here is tremendously strong compared to the rest of the country. So if you take us up to 2030, it looks like we're going to run around 40 to 42% of the whole Texas Triangle so far as population is concerned. And eventually, the whole Texas Triangle will have the same population as Texas has now. We're going to end up with about 75% of the total population of Texas in this Texas Triangle. Now, Texas is doing well all over. We have major, major oil and gas fields out in the Permian Basin. And there is a lot greater population than probably we would have suspected would have happened had we have been doing this 15 years ago. So you see how projections can change because of impacting events that happen. So right now, we're better off than we ever thought we would be. We are really high up there, if not the greatest oil and gas producer in the world now. If I were doing this about 20 years ago, and I was, I was wondering how much oil we could import at that time. And we were worried about running out of energy or becoming so dependent on other parts of the world that we were in security danger. And then one thing happened. And that thing, that impacting condition that happened was fracking. And because of that, we can get to, and also parallel, types of lateral drilling. Because of a lot of that, in other words, new inventions, innovations. Because of that, then we have gone from being very dependent to becoming unexporting of fuel. of fuel. So it is really amazing. It really helps our competitiveness, competitiveness in the world, and it helps our competitiveness as a state. I think the North Texas Commission tells us if we were a country, we would be 23rd in the world. And if we were a state, we would be just right behind Michigan. So that's just our North Texas area, those 13 counties. Now, if we were a state here with the whole Texas triangle, we would be the size of Georgia and just a little bit under the population of Florida. So I wanted to start out with some really good news. We are doing very, very well and the future is only as much as we can imagine. I mean, it is really fantastic. Many of the things that are happening here and the last, Ray Parabat, I'm sure most of you are familiar with him, he's an economist. I believe what he says, he's normally 99.9% of the time, quite accurate. And anything that might happen, of course, would be something that he couldn't have helped with his prediction. But he talks about the economy as far as he can see in Texas is going to be doing very well as long as we can pump oil and gas. And as long as the political conditions remain such that we can become and stay an oil and gas state. So what's that sacred word for your rights, Matt, down in the middle of all this? That's what it says. And your future is grand. It's as much as you can dream it to be. And I'm so impressed. I've read as many materials as I was given to read and looked up a lot of things on the internet. And it's amazing what you have the opportunity to do over the next 20, 40, 60 years. And it's just amazing what we can all do. So the future is bright. And there are things that we certainly need to look out for, but we want to plan those. So we will be going through that. Please stop me at any time and we'll try to address. Or if not, there's no way to know all the answers in many cases. Or if I or maybe the staff gets more pertinent to Louisville than I would know in detail, then if I can't find the answer here today, I will look it up, get it back to Gina or someone here who can then email you out what the answer is next week or something like that. So anyway, after we look at the Texas triangle, then we want to find out what is it that we want to do to become a smart city? Now, most cities today are pre-smart and they're working on smart. And I appreciate the fact that when we were working with Donna and when we were working with Gina to put this together, one of the first things they said is we want a smart city or get smarter here already. Like I say, pre-smart and got several feet and toes into smart. But what is it that we could define ourselves as to be a really truly smart city in the 21st century and be a leader in the 21st century? So what is a smart city? By definition, the smart city I'm going to use is a city that is socially, technologically, economically advanced to the degree that it can be globally competitive. That is, it's a 4.0 city and community. Now, I want to take a little bit of time to explain 1.0, 2.0, 3.0, and 4.0. We are in, does anybody keep up with the World Economic Forum? They met recently in Davos, Switzerland. They are housed in Switzerland, so they look globally at the world. And they have proclaimed that we are in the fourth revolution as far as progress is concerned in civilization. We did study several years ago and came out with a book called Community Leadership 4.0 Impacting the World on Wiki. And we came out with that book, which will probably have a 14 to 20-year life because we were looking so far ahead. And we then proclaimed that we were a 4.0, or we were going into a 4.0 community civilization. So then, much later, the World Economic Forum has come out and said we are in our fourth revolution. So that agrees, and it made me feel better, that we're agreeing, we're even using the same digits, the same numbers. And how I came up with this particular classification was, you can look back 10,000 years ago and most of the civilization was nomadic. They chased the food. And they went where the food was. And they needed to move for one reason or another. That was 1.0. That gave way to isolated and independent communities because the community started then to settle near water. They were more independent and more isolated. And they pretty much stayed to themselves in kind of midpoint of civilization, really early, what we remember, well, I remember, I remember from history. I wasn't living at that point. But then we went into 3.0 and most of us grew up in 3.0. And most cities are still in the cutting edge getting ready to leave 3.0. And that was a networked or connected community. Because after people were isolated and independent, they started noticing that there were other villages down the way. And so they started getting walking trails, et cetera. So they started connecting with one another. And then we came so far as to have railroads and air ports and connected by telephone. And even in that stage, we had the big mainframe computers. I mean, it lasted several hundred years, that particular 3.0. But we have done something with the advent of the internet that we could have rejected probably even as early as 1960, something like that. But when the internet was commercialized in the early 1990s, it had been around for a long time. It was for defense reasons, in case everything went out and people in the defense area could communicate by that. But it wasn't commercialized in the general public. But when the internet became commercialized, then we went into something that we had never met before. I mean, that was a total change in how we operate. And so we've got more and more and more digital and we haven't seen anything yet compared to what we're going to see in the future. So that put us into a 4.0. And as we go through and we see the trends, we'll find that our connections will be digital, that we must prepare for digital employees, digital residents, residents using digital types of connections. So that's a whole different thing. And that's what now is called a smart city technologically, is if we're digitally connected and interconnected. Now, a part of that also is social smartness. It's how do we connect with one another? Do we have emotional intelligence as individuals so that we can all get along? You'll notice now the trend seems to be everybody wants to do their own thing and have their own way. And we'll talk about that in a minute. How do we bring that back together so that we can somehow get along again and move into the future with a degree of cooperation? Well, what's happening is normal. When you have such change, the first thing that happens is chaos. And the first thing that happens inside chaos is polarization. And we had at least two polls today, but it's really a lot more polls. People trying to look for answers to questions they're not even sure about anymore. So that will get better and we will come to some conclusions. And then later on, we will also have more changes, we'll polarize again. So we're projecting that the 2020s, all through that decade, will be the age of discombobulation. It will be the time when everything is disrupting as we know it because this digitization of what we're having happen in this world is going to change everything we know. And I'll get into this more deeply. And then the 30s, the 2030s will start having some more changes, but people will be fairly adjusted to discombobulation and will learn that discombobulation comes and then you have renewal. And then you'll discombobulate again or disrupt again, and then you'll have renewal. And then in the 2040s, it's going to be very interesting, very interesting because I call it convergence technology will happen. And that convergence technology, and let's see, if you'll permit me to go over here, I will show you a magazine that I just found. If I could get through some of my notes. We were talking about this in the director's meeting and we were asked to project, Donna had asked us to project out to at least 2045. And it's really difficult to say detail by detail exactly what year anything will happen. And in some of the labs, we have no idea what many of the university labs and the private labs are working on right now. And a lot of the things that happen commercially will come from our defense work. I mean, the internet came basically from defense. So a lot of it is secret until they commercialize it. A lot of the things that we used to do, even the insulation in our homes, came from commercialization of the things that NASA used in our space program. So there's a lot of things that will be happening that there is no way we could see. But I do believe the 2040s, at least, we're working on it now, but it will be a time of convergence. You can't tell the difference in humans and machines by then. We'll have brain implants, we'll have lots of robots that look exactly like humans, you can't tell the difference. We could be in a meeting like this and the robots will have skin on them. They're already experimenting with this in all kinds of different areas. And you could go into some of those labs and you could not tell the robot from the human being. Already, robots are being experimented with and will be replacing jobs in various areas. But we had talked about convergence and then the other night, it was after our session, I was in CBS and was looking at the magazine rack and Popular Science has a special edition and it's called Your New Brain. And it says, When Humans and Computers Merge. I haven't had time to read much of it because I just got it, but I thought that's exactly what we were talking about. So neurotransmitters, all kinds of things that they're going to be looking at in exploration of the brain, such that our brain will be hooked into other brains, which will not be our human brain. And we will be able to think almost immediately when you have a brain implant at about 1,000 times faster than we can think today. Now, you can imagine the competitiveness a city would have to have with the residents and so forth because if we're thinking in that particular direction, then, you know, our security issues we're going to have to think about. Other countries who are going to be in a competitiveness race with us will be doing this. And so it's really amazing. I was at a company the other day and we were talking about virtual reality. And they were telling us about how probably within 10 to 20 years, some are more optimistic than others, but let's say 20 years, because usually things take longer than projected. But in about 20 years, we'll all have probably normal glasses. But we can just think a thought and the answer will come up and it will flash before us and our eye can detect the answer in our glasses. So they're already experimenting with some great big ones right now with virtual reality. So all these things are happening. It sounds as if it's sci-fi, but it's not. And if we're not prepared for it, and if we're not prepared to have people prepared for it, then we're going to have some things going on that we'll be talking about here, things that we need to watch for, issues and conditions. So we want to be a smart community. We want to be smart socially, understanding that we want to have, there's been called social intelligence. And that means that there is such a sense of community that people have great relationships. And we'll break it down in a minute and show how empowered people want to be and how engaged people want to be if only they're asked. That would be a smart social community. And then you want the third thing there, technologically, socially, and then you want economically. And of course, economically is always very important. It's always a third part of anything that has any sort of balance because it's going to take money to think ahead, to plan ahead, to make the applications that are necessary. So we want to be smart about how we select our projects. And of course, we want to be economically stable. Now, as we look at the future, we're going to have a tremendous race with China. China means business. And it's, the world is in a whole new situation today. Many years ago, the United States was the only gang of town after World War II. And many of the nations of the world were in reconstruction. And about 1980, many of those nations were ready to compete. And the first one that stepped out in the 1980s was Japan. And it competed with us on a grand scale in the 1980s and especially in the automobile industry. And you noticed a great change in what was the great, the big three automobile companies at one time. And now we've got all kinds of automobile companies. So there will be additional, much additional global competition that we have to deal with. And China is setting its goal, has already set its goal, that it will rule the world by 2050, including its monetary system. So we in the United States are up to the competition, but we have to really think about it. And we have to really think about what we want to do. So economically, we would like the dollar or some ramification of the dollar. We may have other types of cryptocurrency by then, but we will have some form of money we would like to have as the world standard. We would like to compete, continue to have that. And we're working on it in the United States. They're very aware of it. In fact, something I might suggest, if you're interested in keeping up with our competitiveness economically, there is the U.S. Competitiveness Council and it's compete.org. They come out with reports all the time telling people how we're doing, what the competitiveness is of the United States. And they give you a competitive index with the rest of the world. And also in Davos, Switzerland, or it's outside Davos, they have their major conferences in Davos. It's the World Economic Forum. And this year, for the first time in many, many years, the United States is number one in its index values and been competitive in the world now to keep that up. And then that helps us then as a city if we're living in a global community where our nation is number one. Okay. So what are the characteristics of a 4.0 wiki community? Now, a wiki community is something that is simply patterned after the digitalization of our economy. And when I say wiki, you participated in wiki websites or if you look at Wikipedia, it's wiki. And that wiki means that people can edit it, people can come in and help create. In other words, it's not just created by one person and it sits there static until that one person changes it. It's a community type effort. And in 4.0, the people will demand a community type effort in most everything that a city does because they're accustomed to being part of a community digitally. And the culture, the digital culture, the value system of the digital culture will start setting the value system of the whole United States eventually. So the first thing in community we need to understand is that we're wiki. Now, what are the characteristics of a wiki community? First of all, it's open source. It's there, it's open for alteration. It also doesn't have a whole lot of bureaucracy. People have direct contact with it. They have direct input, they can get correction directly. Now, there is someone who supervises that can't go out there on the wiki website and just tell all sorts of tall tales. Then will come back and correct it for you after they do a fact or fiction study there. But you even have grassroots movements that will start popping up. If they have an interest, then they'll have an emergent leader that pops up and says, We want this to happen and we're going to march about it and we're going to get emphasis and we're going to bring TV out. Reporters are going to report on it and we're going to put pressure on it. That's a wiki community. People want their issues addressed and so it looks chaotic, but it's normal in this new digital economy. It's very issue oriented. People have issues, they want them resolved. It's emergent. A lot of the leaders that are elected or appointed will keep those positions obviously, but there will be a lot of emergent leaders that are not elected and they're not appointed. They just have an idea and they get a following out there somewhere. They just have an idea and they get a following out there somewhere. And they become very strong. In fact, in futurism, we call them strange attractors. And in any type of chaos, you have strange attractors that arise and you look at it and all at once they have a following. And you might look at it and say, "That is the weirdest idea I have ever heard." I'm sitting here in a leadership position. And then you start looking around and you think, "Well, they've got a following, we're going to have to address that." So in a wiki world, you have to look not only for who's elected, who's appointed, who's being salaried in the leadership positions, but also these emergent leaders who can attract the following and put pressure on to get results for their issues. It's vital, meaning it has life to it, it's living, it's a living, breathing type of environment. It's very chaotic. And chaos can be addressed by changing speed, rules, and structure. I can take anything and put it into chaos if I can change its speed, its rules, or its structure. People can change a city, they can change a ball team, you can change the United States if you change its speed, rules, and/or structure. And that's for physics, that's physical chaos. And so if we continue to change at high speed, the speed, the rules, and the structure of how we operate, then people are going to continue to be chaotic and being almost confused. And so are confused. And then it's dynamic, meaning ever-changing. And then it's ultimately, believe it or not, if you have good 4.0 leadership, you'll be able to put Humpty Dumpty back together again and start operating on a different level. Because sometimes during the story of Humpty Dumpty, I do, from a child, it says he couldn't be put together again because he failed. But we have to put, maybe it won't look the same, but we have to put things back together again so we can be cooperative and move together. Because we can be so diverse and have so many different opinions and so many different directions that we can't go anywhere. And we have to keep that optimal balance between diversity and homogeneity in order to be able to move into the future. Okay. Now, community 3.0, where most people operate today versus 4.0, what do we have to do to get there? First of all, community 3.0 operates a lot in tradition. We've always done it that way, and we're continuing to do so. It kind of becomes their slogan. We move in a 4.0 to innovation, an innovative climate. A smart city continually is looking toward how can I innovate? That's the question they're asking. Now, some people get all excited about 4.0 and think they'll do away with all their tradition. Do you think that's helping? I don't think it is. We want preservation, we want respect of history, we want to keep those things of value. But it will take us go back and looking at what is worth keeping that is a tradition and what do we need to replace by something more innovative? And that takes full analysis, rather than just saying, "We've always done it that way, I'm not going to look at it in differently." I met a city one time, they weren't no longer doing what they said they wanted to do, but they decided that they wanted to keep their city's identity the way it always had been. So they would not welcome a company there that either was from another country or did business with another country. Well, you see how economic development lived on that one. I mean, it was very difficult because we are localized, we can't be that localized. And so after a while, when nothing was happening in that city, then they began to change their philosophy to looking at innovative ways to do things and not do things and be so tightly knit as they would like to be. But that changed and of course the culture's changed and they're moving place right now, but they had to change their attitude a little bit. Power in the old days, you know, maybe 10, 15 years ago, the old days, power was concentrated at the top. About 10 to 15% of the population ran the city. And everybody else in the city was just fine with that because they were working, they were busy, they were into their activities, they kept home at night, they wanted to be with their families, they were going to their volunteer, or going to their sports activities. And that was fine with them. Now, we're looking at distributed power. Everybody wants to be a part. Now, some people tell me, "That is nice, why aren't they engaged?" Why don't, well, we have about a 5% voting rate that elects the officials. Have you got better than that? Most of it's about 5, 10%. Okay, under 5. Okay. So most people say, "Well, if we're so distributed and we're so wiki, how can we index people?" And that is something that needs to be looked at, because people want to sit back and criticize, have you understood? No matter what one tries to do, there'll be somebody who wouldn't do it that way. But then when you ask them what would they do, then well, they don't know either. So, I mean, but that becomes typical. We must get people engaged in the process and that will be some new innovative ways. Of course, we have a lot of online, we can have a lot of sense of place activities we'll talk with and or talk about in a minute. So power is no longer concentrated, it will become distributed. Whole bunch of the other meaning we're all pretty much alike to diversity. And we're getting into extreme diversities. Philosophical diversity is something that's hardly not dealt with, but it seems that we have more philosophical diversity in the United States today than almost any other country. And people believe things they don't really believe in. And they will argue you down for their beliefs. And they don't want you believe your beliefs on them, whatever it pertains to. So our philosophical diversity is there, you understand? Of course, we have all the other types of diversity that we normally choose. But we have to learn to live with and accommodate diversity. Not only that, we have to learn to prize diversity and understand that it is also perceived of innovation and can be. If we're all too much alike, then we tend to be, my cousin had kidney transplant and I remember that he had to take all sorts of immunosuppressive drugs so that his kidney could be accepted, the one that he got, his kidney transplant, his new kidney. Because the body tends to reject anything that's not its own. And if we're a very traditional community, we're very locally oriented, and we've been here a long time, and it just seems to be real good for us, then sometimes we're kind of like the kidney, we tend to reject it if it's not like us and not all of us. And doesn't want to do the things we want to do that questions our behavior. So sometimes we need to apply immunosuppressive activities and behaviors in order to not reject people with ideas that might be magical, that come here to be a part of the community that may be different. And that's going to be a tremendous issue in the future that we certainly will all need to deal with. Local perspective, again, we've talked about it, a lot of people don't think outside the walls of the city. And then to a global viewpoint, because we're going to be so global in the next 15 to 20 years, because we'll be so connected that many people will live here and work somewhere clear across the world. Or local companies will leave from other parts of the world and they will then move to elsewhere. Are we prepared in our first and center education system? I studied different parts of the United States and we have a great per capita local allocation. In South Carolina, mainly because textiles went overseas, the textile industry went overseas, so they had to be something else. And they decided to have local companies, home offices, come in the I-85 corridors of the governor, many of the county judges, the mayors of cities, city councils and so forth, got together and asked to stay because they were wanting to attract income. So now they have raised foreign per capita income as well as asset allocation in the United States, or at least they did just a few years ago. And when I talked with them, they said that was very different. They had to really make some changes, moving from local to global and having expats come in. Because often, when a global company moves to America, they send people from their country, maybe for three years, and the families come with them. And one of the things that they found, especially from some of your Asian countries, is that when they come to the United States, in most of our independent school districts, the kids get behind when they go back to Asia, because they go to school longer per day and they go to school longer in the year. So they had to change up their school system, offer special courses, they had to have ambassadors to make the people feel welcome, all kinds of other things that had to be done in a sense of going global. So we have to plan ahead if we want to move out of even our local or U.S. environment. Okay, so that's a global viewpoint, what do we need to do? Short side of this, that is looking at next year and certainly, you're 4.0 and now, you're looking way ahead, you have a long-term vision. Now, not too many years ago, we could plan that tomorrow would be pretty much like today, except we'd probably have more population coming in, so therefore we needed more hindrances. We would have technology that would probably change somewhat, but we could pretty well lay out a plan, detailed plan for 20 to 25 years. It's going to be difficult to do that from now on, because things change very rapidly. 25 years ago, we wouldn't have thought about thinking about autonomous vehicles. And that's going to change things tremendously. So how do we work in a parallel mode? We operate for today, because we have a special case here in North Texas, because we have people coming in, most of them have automobiles. So we have to at least plan for the classic type of automobile, being what you and I drive today. And then we have to look ahead for other modes of transportation that people will want in the future, as well as look ahead when people will not be driving vehicles now. And that probably won't be, I mean, for everything is self-guided, that's going to be 2050, 2060, 2070. So we're going to go into a phase, until we already have smart cars. My car's really smart as yours. I mean, you know, you've got to put on your seatbelt immediately or it's going to affect you. You can't get out with anything on in there, lights on, or anything like that, because then, you know, it fails, which you can't block over on mine at all. Anyway, so you've got smart cars right now, but those will be built up and up and up. And eventually, you'll be driving a computer with simply a car body. I mean, you know, they're working on a lot in the great automobile manufacturing, but also they're working on the innards at Google and some of your pathetic companies. All right, so the long-term vision is kind of fuzzy out there. We know what we need to be going to, but we need to be able to flex in a two to three year timeframe. Pretty smart, again, socially, economically, technologically, will then be smart, totally smart, totally 4.0. Okay, now, somebody has to lead this. Multiple people will be leading this. What kind of characteristics does a community leadership 4.0 person have? Well, the characteristics that we've had in the past and that we have today, and especially there on the right side with my son, comfort with connective technology, and you were talking about connections, it's not only transportation connections, but it's your communication connections. And knowing when the next big thing, which is 5G, needs to be brought into the city, because if a person's going to stay here and work globally, if you're going to hook up anything to get ready for autonomous cars, you're going to have to have 5G, because it helps you with density and with capacity and so forth and so forth. So you have all these things that need purpose, need orientation, need selflessness, flexibility, responsibility, interpersonal insight, comfort of connective technology, and ethical character. I'm sure you have a couple of that things. And so that's expected. Now, there's something that we're adding to that. People have had it before, but it's almost instilled, or it's genetic or it was environmental, whatever it is, how a person detects that. But now it's a requirement that people have vision. Hindsight is good to an extent of looking at lessons learned, but it's really no good for the experience a person's going to need going into the future. Leaders of the future will have to have risk tech ability and good vision enough to know what they should do and shouldn't do, and maybe the things they'll try will fail, because we are all going into term none of us have ever tried before. And so hiring somebody with 30 years' experience, because those experiences repeated themselves, is not something we look at anymore. We hire people with foresight and with the ability to have good judgment, self-knowledge, and transformational mindset. So adding to all the things that leaders did have, we need this transformational mindset, means we are always changing, we are always transforming, we always are looking toward becoming different than we were yesterday. Self-knowledge, as well as that second one under it, interpersonal insight are another type of intelligence. We have social intelligence, but this is also interpersonal intelligence. And this is also interpersonal intelligence, which is the self-knowledge. It's called emotional intelligence out in some of the popular books, but that have been read about. And a person needs to understand what makes them, their selves care, what makes them angry, what makes them happy, how people can kind of pull the chain and then have to decide how about more to let that person do that, et cetera, et cetera. So we have then the self-knowledge, the transformational mindset, and then the judgment calls. Foresight plus judgment, with all the other things, will be helpful in making a successful leader of tomorrow. Now, judgment has always been that by which leaders were judged. Because if we look at the President of the United States and we look back, now criticized, criticized, criticized probably no matter what, as a person's going through the term. But if you look 40, 50 years down the road and then you're looking back, you look at the judgment calls those figures made. And they might have been criticized then, but then we have time to see the outcomes. So you're judged by your outcomes, therefore your judgment, your judgment. So far, it wasn't a success, it wasn't a failure. Okay, now, how do we identify trends? First of all, environmental scanning, that just means anything you can find, get your hands on to read, you do. Interview, do whatever you can do to find out what's happening tomorrow there. Or did you put the list in there? Is it available? Some of the books and websites, we do not have that in there, but we can send it to you. Okay, we gave you a very short list, only it's a whole page, it's 27. But you can start there and it's the people you read about, it's people you look at their philosophies, and they pretty well are accurately calling the future and all kinds of things behind some are more accurate than others. If you want to keep up with that, environmental scanning. And then a bellwether, simply the direction of weather, if I grow up on the barn here, okay, I dig, and we raise sheep, weather is a lead sheep. And that's the one sheep follow and the weather usually wears a bell, so the sheep will follow what they hear, especially in the darkness. So a bellwether is a lead type entity as we look at the future versus California is where the future begins in America. And usually in my formula, it's California plus 10 is where Texas will end up if it just does nothing. In other words, what's happening in California socio-economically and otherwise will happen in Texas, unless Texas says, "Well, I like that, I think it would want to leave it alone, but I don't like that that's happening out there, therefore we're going to put some things in place that would prevent that happening." So it's something to watch. Or the way jobs shift in China, I use two, I use Michigan, because the employee at one time was the highest, were having to income in the United States and it had populace when it lost jobs. Now it's making a comeback. West Virginia is still losing jobs. And so we look at what could happen if we don't keep up, or if laws change such that oil and gas wasn't pumping as much as you want. What would we do in Texas? And we have to be thinking about some of that. Okay, so it's a bellwether. Who do you look at for what you want to do? We look at history. History doesn't necessarily repeat itself, but it certainly has a lot of lessons. And so we go, "Has this happened before in history? What were the outcomes? What do they do? I really can't do it like that, but do we want to take a risk or a chance?" Metaphors, there are things that could be like, something like, for instance, I use the example of banking. Banking was the first, one of the first institutions that realized it would be nice Banking was the first, one of the first institutions that realized it would be nice to go to the people rather than have everybody come to the bank. And then it started moving to your bank-based institutions, cities have people go there, you can go to them or like, otherwise. But people want to be gone too. Now, amazon.com knew that really well and look at how successful that company is. In fact, that people would like to be gone too as opposed to go to free vessels. So it's completely disrupted the retail industry. So you look at metaphors to see what else then you can do to act like that. These resources are some of the ones that I've given you, various things, so forth, read, read, read. McKinsey Institute is good. Dell computers puts out a newsletter, various economists put out newsletters, but that would be in the list again. Read those sources. And then you observe percolators, weak signals and cross impacts. A percolator is a certain thing, it's a weak signal. And that means there are little things popping up. You'll hear the word on television, you'll see it as you read online, you'll see it on social media and you think, hmm. And how do you determine is that a fad or is that a trend? And if you think it's a trend, then those little percolators will show up. Of course, things, you obviously see some things that are sort of popping up today. They were popping up a little bit a few years ago, they're probably not more today. Okay. One is electromagnetic pulse. And I say any to pay attention to, you know what that is? Okay. That would be if our electric grid got destroyed because there was a giant explosion, bombed our satellites or whatever. And that could be done very easily and interrupting our cybersecurity. That interrupts everything and would interrupt it for a minimum of five years. Can you imagine going without electricity for five years? And so I see that more and more and more. People are saying that, you know, we keep worrying about nuclear weapons and everybody's building up and reading these treaties when all they have to do is just do something like that, have an outer space floating. So you see people racing to own the outer space anyways. Well, that's one of the things that they're looking for. That is probably the greatest danger we face. And so we start seeing that more and more and more. We're starting to pay attention to the cross impacts, certainly a lot of trends can cross. The trend of globalization crossing with the speed of sophistication of technology is changing our world as we know it. That is what we call a cross impact. So we can, you know, the world has become very, very small as a result of that. What are some social trends that are happening?
Are you at a break-in point? We can take--
Oh, I, yeah, anytime. Please interrupt me because I'm sure, you know, if you're not asleep right now--
Okay. Let's take a break for 10 minutes.
Oh, you didn't like a 10-minute break. Okay, very good, yes. And then we'll come back.
So Mayor, Council, so you heard ideas of how we need to look to the future. Their directors went through some of this material. We talked about the future, the past, and we talked about that. That we see facing us. But what I want to do before we do that, so really we talked about 2025, we talked about the process we want to put together to move forward. We talked about potentially looking forward to 2040. Based on, you heard Carolyn talk about the future, why don't we back up a few minutes? And I want to get some input from Council about what is that next target that you want to look towards?
So Donna knows, I've already said something to her. I'll repeat something Carolyn started with, which was things are changing so rapidly and there are so many surprises. I think looking at a 2040 plan, trying to project 15 years into the future, as we all agree, everything's changing rapidly, it becomes harder and harder to see further and further out. I'm not game for another 15-year plan. I'm good for a 10-year plan. But I think trying to project 15 years out now and the next time around, you know, we may get down to the point where we're looking if we can project two years out because things change so rapidly. The other thing I mentioned to Don is that for all of the good, the things that change that we feel are good, there's also equal change in bad. Bad things get worse, good things get better. So both sides of the fence. And I think, again, that produces this hard-to-predict factor of what the future will be. You know, and you can pick almost anything and go, see, there's a perfect example. The Internet's a perfect example of the good that's created and the bad it's created. So, but anyway, I'm more, I'd like to think about looking at a 10-year plan, not a 15-year plan.
I agree with the 2035 plan because I think 2040, I think even the 2025 plan is going to start getting, after 2020, 2021 is going to start kind of getting--
Pre-aged.
Yeah. So I think a 2035 plan does make more sense. And I think we should, there's so much that we can't predict and, you know, we're going to have flying cars for the last 100 years and, you know--
People can't drive in two dimensions.
Try to go, try to go on some of that stuff. I mean, I want to talk about 5G. What are we doing now to get that, you know--
I'm in, I'm in people.
Our system updated as fast as possible and how can we push, you know, to become a connected city there? That's something versus autonomous cars, which 50, 70, she's right. I mean, it's so far down the road, we shouldn't even waste our time with it.
But autonomous cars are, they're hard to test or running now. And, but I agree that, I think 2040 is too far to look ahead, try to look ahead because things are, I mean, things are changing very rapidly. I agree with, you know, looking into 5G and that technology too. But I think, I would agree with a 10-year plan rather than 15.
I think the other way of putting it is that we're starting to see 2025 look a little, you know, long in the tooth. So, you know, try to do another 15-year plan and it's going to be really long in the tooth at 10 years out. And then you're going to say, well, maybe we need a 2025 or a 2040, you know, version two. And it's like, well, why did we try to project that far out in the first place?
I tend to agree with the 10-year plan, but however you, however we decide to do it, regardless whether it's 10 or 15, we're going to have to have check-in points, we're going to have to update it periodically. Because he's right, we cannot, it's hard to look out five years and see what's going to happen. Either way, you know, because I was looking, I was actually jotting in my notes, if we're doing 2040, then we're going to have to have like check-in points where it's going to adjust and change just because of the way society works. So a 10-year plan may be more feasible, but I would still say maybe have two and a half year check-in points, like where are we at and what do we need to adjust?
So Councilman, when you talk about check-in points, are you talking about with the public that we would go back at every two years? Is that, is that the thought?
Probably like a minute, a small scaled-down version, but where we look at, okay, these are the goals we set for 10 years. This is what, because, I mean, even the 2025 plan had things that were supposed to be done in 2015 that didn't start until 2018. So just what, just so we can say, okay, this is where our goal was, is it still feasible? You know, do we need to kind of change, give ourselves an adjustment period to adjust to what the environment and economy gives us?
Yeah. And do some things still make sense to the way we said we would do them or has some technology or change in the environment or finances or whatever redirected that.
And that could be probably through the board and maybe some, you know, public meetings to, I don't think we need to go out like, because I remember 2025, it was this big to do. I don't think we need to do that, but we need to have, use the board and get some citizen involvement and say, hey, this is what the situation is right now. You know--
Get a pulse.
We're either booming or we're in a recession and these are adjustments we need to make.
Thanks, Mayor. I think the community that probably, in my opinion, does this best in North Texas is Capel. They have a rolling 10-year plan and it comes up every, every few years and it just, it just keeps moving. And it does like our 2025 plan for them. Now, they're, they have a lot of different needs. They're a much smaller community, more built out, so there's a bit more stability, I think, for them. But I think they're a great model. The only thing that concerns me on the 10-year timeframe is building in bonds and is that too short? It's going to put a lot of pressure on some of our construction projects, I think, if we, if we go to that in shorter term or we're going to do more bonds in a shorter timeframe. I don't know the answer. I really don't know what all the impacts are on that, but it just feels compressed unless we can get construction to start working better than my historical understanding of construction happens. So that would be my, my only real concern on the 10-year timeframe is does that compress bonds, make it so we have to try bond elections quicker? Does it create more compression on big projects? I don't know the answer to that, but it's my only concern.
So I would point out that most of our bond programs have been 10-year bond programs. That's how they've been planned. So the plan that we approved in 2003 actually lasted longer. Some of it was because of money we got through DCTA--
Right.
--related to ELAP and funding in roads, or it would have been a 10-year plan. So I don't have a huge concern about an impact on our bond planning. I think actually that works--
Actually syncs up better.
--easier for us.
I'm going to be counter to just, I guess, everybody. First time that's happened.
In 24 years? I doubt that.
I think we need to not come out and say that in 25 years, we're going to paint this building red and that one's going to be blue. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about a big-picture type thing. And the bond programs are a good example of that. If we're doing a 10-year, a 15-year bond program, that you've got to be outside of the 10 years, just in, to be into reality, what we need. So I think we need to look at that, not going into definite points, but looking at a big picture.
And Mayor, Council, I think we can balance between those two opinions. Certainly 2040, I think, is a difficult target because it's so far out and the world is changing so quickly. I think Carolyn would tell you, when we started talking with her, it was 2050. You know, because you really want that really long vision. But I agree that it's good to balance. So certainly you're looking to what that could be and what is in the future, but you're doing it in 10-year snaps. And I think that works well for city staff. It's easier for us to get our minds around that. But I think, Mayor, you're correct too, that that doesn't mean that you're not also considering long-range impacts of those issues.
How are we going to do, you know, for the most part, our big, long-term projects are taken care of by somebody else. Water, roads. So that's mainly Dallas, the state, and then we supplement that with other things from smaller projects. But 35E is always going to be a project, but we don't have direct control of it. And then we need, every year, keep working on that a little bit more. Water, long-term, if something happens in Dallas, with doing water utilities, then everybody in the region has problems because there's not enough capacity in the other systems to handle it. And I don't know, I don't see that happening, but we don't have to worry about that right now. And that would be part of the long-term projects that we would be looking at, except just to make sure we're still in line to get water. And I'm assuming we're there still.
Mayor, I think really our involvement with organizations like the Council of Government, the state, a number of our employees are very involved in their professional associations and they participate in those groups so that they, we have input and impact on those decisions. We're bringing Louisville issues to the table and I think that's really very, very important. And it helps us have a voice. And so, so certainly water is a huge issue. The state of Texas and the Cog are very focused on that. But as you know, the growth in North Texas has been beyond what anyone would have thought it would have been 20 years ago. And so, so I think we have to stay involved and looking forward. And some of those are such huge issues, they're not just us, they're all of the cities in Texas and the counties and the state of Texas.
If we just think about something, the city of Louisville in the 50s turned down on getting water from Louisville Lake because we didn't need it.
That is correct. That is a true statement.
We've got well water, what's the problem? When I was a kid, you turn the faucet on during the summer, there wasn't any water. So just remember that. It can go at some point. Hopefully it's not going to happen anytime soon, but it's happening somewhere.
We made that decision on TNMP too.
Uh, yeah.
When we had the opportunity to purchase that infrastructure.
We might have been doing that.
We might have. At least they can blame the squirrels.
I think it raises the question, so we made the decision based on the information we had at the time.
Sure.
Would a longer-range plan have changed the decision? No, it wouldn't have. A longer-range--
If we had a 10-year or a 20-year plan, we probably would have made--
You would still make the same decision, so. So, and the other thing too is it's a 10-year plan, it's not a 10-year completion contract. It's a 10-year plan. Some things don't get finished in a 10-year plan within the 10-year frame.
What you're saying on the 10-year, I think some of what Brandon has, that he's talked about, you bring in two and a half years to do something and maybe look at some long-term on certain projects.
Well, and 2025, I mean, we've sort of freshened it up a few times, but the longer you start to go out and the faster things change, the more you're going to have to freshen it up.
Sure.
And that makes you beg the question, why am I having to do so much freshening up? Why am I not just making a new plan? Am I making my plans too long to the future that they die early?
Any plan I see thus do will be changed.
Yes.
No matter how long it is.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
What, what I think is most exciting about all of this is that I'm not sitting here going, can we do a new plan? Can we get some new targets? You know, I remember when we were looking at 2010 ending and there was a big gap there on what will we be, going to be doing next? And then I remember that there was some resistance to going and doing a 2025 plan. And now here we are asking, when's our next plan? So I'm, that's very exciting to me.
I'm not arguing with her, are you, Ben?
Right, right. And I think that, I think that's awesome.
So Council, certainly staff appreciates this direction. We're going to refocus. We're going to call it the 2035 and we'll update that plan that you saw that Karen developed. So we're making sure that we're doing maybe a little bit more intense.
If you put the 2035 right next to the 2040, they're real close.
Yes, sir. That's correct. But I think it's easy to keep those timeframes a little shorter and a little bit more focused. So we're certainly able to do that. You know, with all this said, I want you to know that every one of our staff members, they are focused on the future, even to the point of when we look at things like a speaker series and that, an announcement I wanted Nika to talk about a little bit and it's who our first speaker is because it's also certainly looking towards the future.
Is it you, Nika?
Yes. Two, two.
I'll take two.
I'll take two.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Donna. Thank you, City Council. I, Donna had asked me to actually call you and leave a message for you on our speaker series because we have booked several very high-caliber speakers already. But today maybe after, especially talking the, after the futurist discussion, it's a good forum to kind of actually announce the initiative that you guys put in the budget last year by budgeting for a speaker series and Ms. Barron actually supporting that and putting in the, in the budget. So we really appreciate that. So we have started on working on that and we're going to start in March, actually. So our first speaker is going to be in March. So of course, the purpose of the speaker series is basically what you just talked about. It's talk about the future, bring high-caliber speakers that are involved with those types of topics to engage our community, put our community on the map. A lot of us are involved with organizations that have speaker series, such as a lot of colleges and universities have that, the museums have that. One of the organizations I'm actually involved with is the World Affairs Council and they bring very, very high-caliber speakers as of last week. For instance, Madeline Albright was one of their speakers. So the reason I'm-- So, the reason I'm bringing this up, because our first speaker is partnering with World Affairs Council and bringing Brent Gleason. He is going to be speaking for them on March 19th during a lunch session, and he will be our speaker in an evening session. Brent Gleason is a Navy SEAL, and he is, he's going to, basically what he does, he brings his experience in the battlefields to the real-life entrepreneurship in the business community. His topic is actually leading through change, so that is exactly where we are and where we are going. So, we are very, very excited to have him, and doing, because of that partnership, he was able to get a great deal for us, so that's working really well. Our next speaker is going to be May 9th, and it's going to be Tom Lewis, who many of you may know, he talks about Texas 2036. And that is, again, something that all of us need to be focused on, on what's going on and what's going to happen to the states, how can we keep our edge, how can we get better and better, beat California? But I'm excited also about our closing speaker, which is going to be in October, and that goes back to, again, entrepreneurship and kind of out of this world. So, it's going to be Anusha Ansari, who is the first woman on the business side that went into space. She is local, she's in Plano, she's an entrepreneur, she built a huge business, basically out of truly a startup to a $700 million business, and of course, was able to pay $30 million to NASA to go to space. So, she's one of the four in the world that have done that, as in, other than the NASA-trained astronauts, is one of the, basically, one of regular people that went into space. So, she will be our closing speaker, she's highly in demand, and we're very excited. And that really works or ties into our schools that have STEM programs. She actually gives a great talk about kids in school and how they can achieve their goals and their dreams. So, again, very exciting, very appreciative of your funding this program. And again, our focus is going to be basically, of course, anything you want, anything that you feel like is going to be a topic of discussion that you want to bring to the forefront. But our focus, of course, economic development and entrepreneurship, climate and environmental changes, global health is something that actually one of our speakers, we're trying to book, is going to be focused on that, and we may partner with the hospital on that, so that would be really good. And of course, arts, media, and social changes. So, that's what we're going to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you, Nika. So, as I said earlier, our staff members are all focused on issues of importance to our future, and we're going to be doing that in a variety of ways, including our speaker series. So, I just wanted to include that as part of our look towards the future and our update of 2025 and moving towards 2035.